I will now call to September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, Blue Springs City Council Meeting Order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and I will lead you into the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seen it? Want to welcome in attendance as well as those that might watch later on social media. Next we have the confirmation of a form.
Councilmember Kayler.
Present.
Levise.
Present.
Fowler.
Present.
Erickson.
Present.
Edmondson.
Here.
Cole Pepper.
Present.
Mayor Ross.
Present.
We have a form.
Next we have a consent agenda. Councilmember Levise has asked that we pull items E and F. Are there other items that need to be pulled? If not, accept a motion for approval.
Some moves.
Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Mayor, I would also like to make a statement with regard to Resolution Number seventy-three, twenty-two-three, which is the Fall Creek CID. It's the appointment of nominating, or they're nominating the successor directors for that board. The original resolution that was received by the attorney for the Fall Creek CID had an error in the date for Tim Harris's term that's included in the packet. The date is actually November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-seven. They inadvertently had an extra three on there, so we just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Do any notice? All in favor, now roll call.
Councilmember Kayler.
Aye.
Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Cole Pepper.
Aye.
Kay, Erickson.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Councilmember Levise.
Thank you, Your Honor. Items E and F have to do with the oats contract. There was a new term added to the contracts this year, and that is a requirement of residency for anybody that rides the oats contract. A couple scenarios, I think, by which this might be too restrictive than we intend. Councilmember Erickson has mentioned his sister rides oats before, and I can foresee a scenario by which she had some people from out of town visiting, and they wanted to use the services, that they would have to check residency from anybody that might be with her. Another particular scenario that has come up is, I don't know if Bob's in the audience, he told me he might be here, but our Vesper Hall Site Council, or president of that group, or chair of that group, is actually an Independence resident, but he gets picked up from a church here in Blue Springs city limits. So the previous contracts limited the transportation within city limits, and I think it makes sense to keep that. But I think the residency requirement is too restrictive. I don't see why we want to discourage people from coming to Blue Springs to use that service. So I'm going to make a motion that we remove from the contract for item E and F the word residence in section nine, replace that with individuals, which is how the previous language was in the previous contracts, and then also remove the words that reside in both sections. Should just be three incidents of the word residence and two incidents of the words that reside.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Your Honor, if I might, I thought we were going to look at how many people actually used our services, both the oats and the transportation into the city, that were not Blue Springs residents. Do we have any idea how many people use that that are not residents?
Uh, we know that. Dennis?
Um, currently, right now, we only provide transportation for residents, so we do not provide transportation for non-residents.
Even though it's not restricted?
It's the, it hasn't been in the contract that way, but we've always restricted it that way because the taxpayers of Blue Springs are the ones paying for those services along with the Mark Grants.
So I guess I have a question then for Councilman Levise. Are these people riding the oats now?
There was at least incidents of non-residents previously riding oats from our service, yes. There are other cities that have contracts. Great Valley, for example, their contract allows them to take them to Blue Springs. Our contract requires city limits, but, yes.
Your Honor. Councilmember Fowler.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, just to make sure we're talking about the same ridership, that there's the oats ridership, which we're talking about tonight, but then also, I think we did, I think I asked for a survey of, for the KC Metro Bus service to know how much, how many of those are residents versus non-residents. So hopefully staff can still follow up on that one someday.
That's item eighteen tonight, actually.
Councilmember Kayler.
A good example is, you could be living in the city of Independence, but still have a Blue Springs mailing address. So how are they deciphering between that? Because on a driver's license, it will show up Blue Springs, and it would be the city of Independence that they actually reside in. And then, a lot of confusion there, but as Councilman Levise was saying, it's really confusing, especially for Bob. He lives in Independence, he has a Blue Springs resident, or, from the address with the post office. So it makes it a little confusing there on exactly how they regulate that. And so, I would have to agree with Councilman Levise.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm not saying I'm opposed to the change. I just thought it was a good piece of information to have, because as was stated later on this evening, we'll also talk about the transportation into the city. And I think those are two important pieces of information.
This has to do with oats, but as we talk about KCATAs.
Yes.
Steph, do we have any indication at this point? Who's looking into that? Well, how many? Jason, are you doing that? Come over to the microphone and tell us how many Blue Springs residents are riding that that we're paying for?
Uh, Your Honor, I have made that specific request in the last couple of weeks from my contact with the KCATAs. They had recently taken a ridership survey, and we're trying, working to parse that information out for me. So I should, we'll have it hopefully soon, uh, but these wheels tend to grind a little bit slowly. But previously, because there was no, since there are no fares charged, they didn't have any good way to track, like, from that, from credit card information or something. So, but they did do a ridership survey this last spring, late springtime, and so, but I don't know that they have enough data from the Blue Springs route to give us a precise link, but we'll, whatever data they do have, we'll, I'm, I'll get it, and I will share it with you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We had a motion, we had a second, we had discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries.
So that's, that's the amendment now we need to record.
Oh, yeah, it says the amendment. Okay, that was spoken on the amendment.
I move to accept E and F as amendment.
Okay. Is there a second on that one?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Next, we're gonna move on to a public hearing on the Dreamland, nope, we're not gonna do that yet. We got a recognition to do. Go on to Chief.
Mayor, if you allow me, as you walk down here, I'd like to read this letter and recognize two citizens from the city of Blue Springs. On behalf of the mayor and the city council, as well as the citizens of Blue Springs, the Blue Springs Police Department would like to recognize Bill Witter and John Rawl for putting their safety aside to assist a citizen in need. On May ninth, two thousand twenty-three, a customer accidentally drove their vehicle into the retention pond south of the go-car wash on South Seven Highway. The car wash manager, Bill Witter, and John Rawl, a compex technician, observed the vehicle go into the pond and immediately went into action. Working together as a team, they were able to rescue the trapped driver from the submerged vehicle. It is for their bravery and their quick actions that the Blue Springs Police Department is awarding citizen recognition certificates to them both.
Okay, would you come up and receive your certificate, as well as Larry? Larry? Larry, I understand that you're the person that they're saying. Is it you, Larry? Is Larry in here in person, do you guys?
He's in the back row. He, he's hard-hitting, sir.
Larry, get up here. Come on up here. This is a guy that I know. Okay, we're gonna get in here, we're gonna put you in the middle, because they saved you, they can save me. It's gotta be safe.
No, you're okay, you're okay. I have to. Now we're good here.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. You guys look great. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, now we're going to have a public hearing on Dreamland Learning Conditional Use Permit.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter into the record. City Council Information Form dated September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three with the following attachments: staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, one hundred and eighty-five foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, title for land use section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan by reference, and bill approving the conditional use permit. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. Staff report.
You sound swear the testimony about to give in this case, to be the truth, I've forgotten.
I do. Kara Elbert, nine oh three West Main Street, on behalf of the city, and I have been sworn. Thank you, Mayor and council members. Before you this evening is a request for a conditional use permit with alternative development standards for Dreamland Learning Center proposes a commercial daycare located at thirty-five oh nine Northwest Valley View Place, Unit B. The property is zoned GB general business to allow for a commercial daycare with the approval of a conditional use permit. The request for the conditional use permit is to allow for new land use, commercial daycare on a property located in the general business district, which requires approval of said conditional use permit in order to operate. The applicant proposes to expand childcare services from the existing Dreamland Daycare and Learning Center directly adjacent to the west to start a pre-kindergarten program for four- to five-year-olds. An existing conditional use permit was approved in the spring to allow for a commercial daycare in Unit A of the same building, which is providing before and after-school childcare in conjunction with Dreamland Daycare and Learning Center. The proposed site plan has been submitted by the applicant for staff to review. The building is broken into three different tenant spaces, and Unit B is in the middle of the building. Enrollment is projected to be at a maximum of thirty students with care being provided by three staff members. Proposed hours of operation are six-thirty a.m. to six p.m., which includes instructional pre-kindergarten time as well as additional childcare. Alternative development standards are being requested for reductions in sidewalk width requirements and site and landscape requirements. Per UDC Section four oh seven twenty, a request has been made by the applicant to waive the sidewalk width requirement for sidewalks that are abutting the vehicle overhang. The site includes a sidewalk along the front of the building to connect from the parking area to the public entrance of the building. The sidewalk is existing and therefore does not meet current code requirements of the eight-foot width. Staff believes that since the sidewalk is existing, the applicant should not be required to bring it up to current code. If the sidewalk was widened, the parking stall sizes and drive-out width would be compromised. Per UDC Code Sections four oh seven forty, a request has been made by the applicant for modification to all landscaping requirements, since no further development is proposed at this time. The only proposed improvements include interior remodeling of the building and the addition of a fence along the rear of the property. The addition of the landscaping requirements would not lead to significant aesthetic improvements that would impact the site. Staff supports the request for the modifications from the Unified Development Code. The applicant is also required to comply with the special use standards per UDC Section four oh five fifty A, eight C, which includes state licensing through the state of Missouri, occupational licensing, and required vehicle drop-off area. The required parking is shown on the site plan and is located in the front and the rear of the site. The required fence to be constructed is shown on the rear of the site to assist, to help children and staff safely exit Unit B and continue to the playground area adjacent to the west at Dreamland Daycare and Learning Center. A shared parking agreement is also on file with staff from the parking owner. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with the five conditions listed, and I will take any of your questions.
Your Honor. Questions from the council?
Your Honor.
Your Councilmember Kayler?
Just so I understand correctly, there is already a daycare there, correct?
So there has been a conditional use permit approved in Unit A, which is on the far east side of the building, and that's gonna be before and after-school childcare. And then this would be for Unit B, which would be directly next to that.
Correct.
Yep.
So we're actually just expanding somewhat for that, so it's already one there. I just want to make sure that was a clarification, that everybody understands that one's already there, we're just growing. Thank you.
Correct, yep.
You want to ask the council? Councilmember Erickson?
Could you, excuse me, could you clarify the width of the sidewalk?
Sure, so it's five foot currently, and it needs to be eight, according to the code, but because it's existing.
Existing is five feet.
Yep.
And then, one quick one, the twelve-month, uh, do you guys flag that? So twelve months from now, if the conditional use is not done, it automatically will go to you and you?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Uh, yes. Uh, so my concern, I guess, is with the illustrations that you show, it indicates in the description that the bike rack is gonna be up against the fence on the west side of the building, which is a driveway to the back. And if memory serves me correct, that drive is not very wide back there. So, um, if a bike rack is secured to the fence, does that put the bike out in the way of the driveway access to the back?
I'm gonna defer to the applicant to have her kind of answer that a little bit more, but.
And do we also get, uh, I'm assuming that once they start doing the entry or finish, that will come back to staff, but that's not necessarily come to us?
So, yes, it will just go to staff. They'll have to apply for building permits, potentially, depending on what kind of interior work they're going to need to do, but that wouldn't come back to Planning Commission or council.
Because I know at one time, the, there was very limited bathroom facilities with inside that building, so hopefully the interior work will accommodate a lot of that and take care of that.
Absolutely. And part of that, too, is, um, with their licensing with the state, they require certain things for it to be a daycare, and so, those are things that they'd have to go through that process as well.
And then again, on your, the picture that you're seeing on the screen now, on the pen drawing, it seemed like I read in there that there was two parking spaces for Unit B, but yet you're indicating a lot more parking spaces for B. Uh, if they do rent, or someone does rent out C, you've limited them to a front pace and a back space by this diagram.
Yep. So I'll explain that a little bit. So the, the one, the owner of the whole property, he's, he has Unit C, and he's a contracting business, and so he doesn't need the parking. We have a parking agreement, a shared agreement on file, and so he said he didn't need very much parking, that he was willing to give up some of his for them.
Okay, that explains it then. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, thanks for staff report. We'll go to applicants. Applicant present? Is the applicant present? Would you like to come up, be sworn in, because I think there are some questions that we need you to answer? Okay.
Yes, I do. Deborah Clark, thirty-seven hundred Northwest Petrel Court.
Okay, I think Councilman Edmondson had a question.
Uh, my concern was just the placement of the bicycle rack. Yeah, I, is that where it's at? Because it's required we have a bicycle rack, and that was a convenient place to put it?
Yes, and it's towards the driveway. You come in north, and the driveway is for the parking that goes in the back. And it's a area that has, like, a different pavement that the bike with rack was gonna go towards the back on the fence.
Facing towards the back, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so they won't actually be going perpendicular to the fence, they'll be going with the fence, I'm assuming?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Cole Pepper?
And I'm assuming the only people parking there are going to be the instructors.
Right, the staff.
Um, and then for drop-off and pickup, that will go across the front.
In the front, yes.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience like to speak in support of, support of. Opposition two? Opposition two. Close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce Bill?
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
All right.
First reading of bill number five one two six, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit with alternative divi, development standards to allow for a commercial daycare in a GB general business district for three-five-zero-nine Northwest Valley View Place, Unit B, Dreamland Daycare.
Your Honor, remove the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign?
Second reading of bill number five one two six, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit with an alternative development standards to allow for a commercial daycare in a GB general business district for thirty-five oh nine Northwest Valley View Place, Unit B, Dreamland Daycare.
Your Honor, move to approve on the second reading and given the proper ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number five two four nine.
Next we have public hearing on the vineyards amended planned unit development concept plan.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter to the record. City Council Information Form dated September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three with the following attachments: staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, one hundred and eighty-five foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, written letter of opposition, title for land use section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, and two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan by reference, and bill approving the PUD concept plan amendment. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. Staff report.
You sound swear the testimony about to give in this case, to be the truth, I've forgotten.
I do. Adair Bright, nine oh three West Main Street, on behalf of the city, and I have been sworn in. The next item on the agenda is a request for an amended PUD concept plan for the Vineyards at the Springs Clubhouse at seven hundred Northwest Valley Brook Road. The Vineyards is located on the south side of Artie My's Road between Northwest Third Street and Northeast First Street, south of Saint Mary's Medical Center, and was developed in nineteen seventy-five as a planned unit development. The subject property covers approximately one point five acres and is zoned MF fourteen, which permits multiple residential building types and supporting accessory structures and uses. The applicant is requesting an amended PUD concept plan to remove the allowed residential accessory dwelling unit within the existing clubhouse building. The PUD concept plan was amended in two thousand twenty to allow for the accessory dwelling unit to assist with maintenance and security of the building and common grounds. The HOA has now determined that the accessory dwelling unit is no longer needed, and they would like to remove the allowed use. Staff believes that the request is acceptable since it will return the clubhouse to its original intent and purpose. Public, or Planning Commission held a public hearing on September the eleventh and recommended unanimous approval. Staff recommends approval of the PUD concept plan with two conditions as outlined in the staff report. Since the request only impacts an already developed site and the change is internal, if approved, a PUD final plan will not be required, and I'm here for any questions.
Questions from the council? Okay, seeing none. Is the applicant present? Come up, be sworn in.
I do. My name is Sage Steinbach, my address.
Can you get closer to that microphone?
My name is Sage Steinbach.
Is that on staff?
My address is six seventy Northwest Follibrook Road.
Okay, you just speak softly, huh?
I do.
Okay. Uh, do you have anything to add that's not in the staff report?
Um, the only thing I have to add is, we had two objectives when we had requested the amendment in two thousand twenty. One was to stop the vandalism on our communal asset, and the second was to increase the property values for the townhomes within the community, and we were successful in both objectives. So we're requesting the removal at this time.
Okay, are there any questions from, comments from staff? Seeing none, that was easy. You can be seated.
Thank you.
We'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience like to speak in support of, support of. Opposition two? Opposition two. Close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce bill number five one two seven?
I'll introduce, Your Honor. First reading.
First reading of bill number five one two seven, an ordinance approving an amended planned unit development concept plan for the Vineyards at Spring, at the Spring Clubhouse, seven hundred Northwest Valley Brook Road.
Your Honor, remove the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Oh, Councilmember Levise.
I just have a quick comment. I just wanted to give kudos to the Vineyards, and actually to the council. I remember when this was, I guess twenty twenty is what Ms. Bright said, it was kind of a weird thing to be requested, and I was unsure about it at the time, and I appreciate the Vineyards, because they didn't have to remove this, but they are now that it's no longer necessary, and I appreciate the council for trying out something a little different. It worked out, and I think that was worth mentioning, so.
All right. Any other comments? Not all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign?
Second reading of bill number five one two seven, an ordinance approving an amended planned unit development concept plan for the Vineyards at the Springs Clubhouse, seven hundred Northwest Valley Brook Road.
Your Honor, move to approve on the second reading and assign a proper ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number five two five zero.
Next we have a public hearing on the learning experience conditional use permit.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter to the record. City Council Information Form dated September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three with the following attachments: staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, one hundred and eighty-five foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, title for land use section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan by reference, bill approving the conditional use permit, and bill approving the final plan. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. Staff report.
I do. Jamarcus McGee, nine oh three West Main Street, on behalf of the city, I've been sworn. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. Before you this evening is a request for a conditional use permit for the learning experience located two seven five zero Southwest Seven Highway. The conditional use permit is to allow for a daycare commercial land use in GB general business zoning district. The site is currently undeveloped and is in primarily a flat open area. According to the UDC, the daycare commercial land use requires a approval of conditional use permit to operate in general business zoning district. The, the proposed daycare meets all requirements and complies with the non-residential guidelines. The exterior, exterior building materials consist of stucco and stone with metal trimming. Staff believes that the architectural design is in keeping with the other commercial developments along Southwest Seven Highway. Overall, the building design and materials are durable, high-quality, and meets the minimal design standards for non-residential buildings. The building is classified as general commercial and meets all requirements in regards to setbacks, building coverage, and building height. A landscape plan has been provided and meets all requirements per the UDC, and all buffer requirements have been met. All requirements for vehicle bicycle parking has been met. A five-feet ADA compliant sidewalk is required along Southwest Seven Highway. Parking dimensions and driveway aisles have been met. Planning Commission held a public hearing on Monday, September eleventh, and recommended unanimously approval of the conditional use permit. A site plan design review was reviewed concurrently with the conditional use permit and the final plat- plat, and was approved at the September eleventh planning commission meeting. Staff reviewed the application, finds that all review criteria has been met, and allows for the operation of a daycare at the subject property. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with conditions. I'll be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Questions from council?
One small one. The tall shadow fence that's pictured there, because it's in the photograph, is that what we will expect?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thanks staff. Is the applicant present? Like to come up, he's sworn in.
Yes. Jeff Durbin, eighty-three ninety-eight Augusta Place, Lone Tree, Colorado. Not a Bronco fan.
So, so, so there's nothing you'd like to add?
Uh, any questions that you all have, we're happy to answer them. Uh, we're excited to bring the learning experience to the community. I will throw out that Jamarcus and his group have been really nice to work with, so we're developing these in a lot of cities within not only the Kansas City metro area, but down in Oklahoma, and, and they've been really good to work with, so thank you.
Thank you for those positive comments about staff. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, your honor, um, I guess just, uh, just a quick statement on the business model, what population are you gonna be going after for your business? It says a learning experience, so I assume it's educational.
Sure, yeah, good question. Um, it's, uh, six weeks to six years old, so it's a daycare.
Okay.
Uh, they do, uh, a lot of, uh, learning programs, early education, uh, so that's why they put the label, uh, early, uh, learning center on it, but, uh, yeah, and so-
Maximum capacity, or?
You know, it's, it varies by state and what license is allowed, but based on the square footage, so the building's a ten thousand square foot building. Generally, that allows for a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy students. Generally, at any given time, it'll be a hundred and forty, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty. So, and one, one thing too that comes up a lot is the, the drop off time and pickup time, uh, it, a lot of times, even though this is considered a school, it's not like a, a elementary school wherein the moms and dads line up at eight AM and drop off and then line up at three. They start dropping off at six thirty AM to nine AM and start picking up at three PM to six thirty PM, so.
Any other questions? Councilmember Edmonds, I mean, uh, Eric.
I'll be Erickson. Thank you. Uh, on your census of pupils, isn't the, uh, or aren't there requirements based upon the square footage of the room where the students are as opposed to the square footage of the building?
It, it, correct, and, but it's, it's all, there's a capacity, I don't think we have that on any, I could look that up and get it to you, but it's all, it varies, the state licensing board, and depends on the age of the students, so the infants' room might be X size of space, but it's, it's a smaller capacity of, of kids. So, it's, it's all a mathematical formula, yeah.
Thanks.
Sure.
Councilmember Cole Pepper?
Yeah, I'm curious, what is gonna be the ratio of students to, uh, instructors?
That's a great question.
I thought so.
Um, generally, what I've seen on the numbers, so we, we act as the developer, the real estate developer.
Okay.
We're not the operator. But I, we work a lot with the operators, and I can tell you, generally, there's, for the maximum amount of kids, there's about twenty-three staff. So, but again, it, it varies per room. So, in the infant room, they're gonna have two staff, or say maybe four to eight babies. In the toddler room and in the, what they call twaddler room, they'll have a different ratio, so I can't get, but I can get you that if you would like it, I can. Ms., Cole Pepper, I can send that to you.
Yeah, I would like that.
Yeah, we can get that to you.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Your honor.
Yes, councilmember Kayler?
Isn't that regulated by state?
It is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gonna go to the public, anyone in the audience like to speak in support of, support of, opposition two, opposition two, close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce bill number, dodo, five one two eight?
I will introduce it.
First reading of bill number five one two eight, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow a daycare commercial in the GB general business zoning district.
Your honor, remove the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye? Alright, oh, hold up.
Sorry.
Discussion down here.
Yeah, uh, I do have some concerns with this particular use for this property. I know, uh, not so much of being a daycare in general, because I, I think this is the third daycare we've had in the last two or three meetings, so clearly there's a need. I think my concern is more, uh, the daycare at this particular property, and based on the criteria, I don't, I don't think it, it works out well, so, uh, I will not be supporting a conditional use permit. The only problem with the building itself, so the, the plat, I think, uh, would be fine, but, uh, I won't be supporting the conditional use permit.
Okay, any others? Yes?
Could I ask councilmember Levesey clarification on your concerns?
Yeah, well, the particular location, for example, the other one we had tonight, it's off of the main thoroughfare, it's, uh, existing that we're just expanding. Even the daycare we had, uh, a couple of meetings ago had a different use associated with it, so I just don't feel that this particular property is a, a good use for this.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Any further discussion?
Uh, I was just gonna say, I know, uh, a few weeks back, we approved, uh, uh, early childcare, maybe at least one of the uses right north of the Dollar General up in the north part of town, and this one's gonna go just right north of the Dollar General in the south part of town, so, we're just trying to keep up with this one.
Depending on the quality of service, competition might drive the price a little bit.
Yep, yep.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poll same sign.
No.
No. No.
How many noes?
I heard two noes, councilmember Levesey and Kayler.
I have it over the noes.
Motion carries with the vote of five to two?
Yes, okay.
Second reading of bill number five one two eight, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow a daycare commercial in the GB general business zoning district.
Your honor, move to approve the second reading and assign a proper ordinance number?
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Erickson?
No.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
No.
Levesey?
No.
Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Motion carries with the vote of four to three, given ordinance number five two five one.
Next we have interrupting reading of bill number five one two nine.
First reading of bill number five one two nine, an ordinance approving the final plat for Palo Park Commercial Seventh Plat, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your honor, remove the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poll same sign.
Second reading of bill number five one two nine, an ordinance approving the final plat for Palo Park Commercial Seventh Plat, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your honor, I move to approve the second reading and assign a proper ordinance number?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Edmondson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
No.
Levesey?
Yes.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried with a vote of six to one, given ordinance number five two five two.
Next we have a public hearing on the twenty twenty-three property tax levy, councilmember, well, not yet, we'll get you on the next one. Okay, staff report.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter to the record, city council information form dated September thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-three, with the following attachments, notice of twenty twenty-three final aggregate assessed valuation, notice of public hearing is published in the examiner on September ninth, two thousand twenty-three, and bill establishing the property tax levy for twenty twenty-three. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you, we're gonna go to the interim city administrator.
Yes, I need to be sworn in.
Yeah, I guess.
I do, Christine Kates, nine oh three West Main Street. The, uh, bill before you tonight establishes the twenty twenty-three property tax levy for the city of Blue Springs at a total rate of fifty-seven point fifty-nine cents for a hundred dollars assessed valuation. This is a decrease of a little over six cents per a hundred dollars assessed valuation from last year. The basis for this levy is based on the numbers that the city has received from Jackson County on September eleventh of this year, that's typically when we receive the final information from the county to establish our levy. The difference this year is that the city, um, the city of Blue Springs has twenty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine parcels within the city, and the, uh, Jackson County received appeals on four thousand four hundred and nine of those parcels, which is twenty point two percent of the total parcels. As of September eleventh, the, um, appeal, appeals that have been closed is two thousand three hundred and sixty-five, which is fifty-three point six percent of the total appeals, leaving two thousand forty-four or forty-six point four percent of the active appeals. This also represents twelve point four one percent of our total assessed evaluation is still under appeal. So this levy is being set with, um, those appeals not being yet done. We do have to set the levy tonight because it's required by state law, there's a little typo in the, um, council formation form, and it says tax rates, uh, must be established no later than October of each year, it's October first of each year, we have to have that date. If the ta- tax rates are not set by this date, then no tax rate other than the rate necessary for the repayment of principal and interest on bonds shall be certified for the year. And this, um, for us, that would be fifteen cents, and so instead of the fifty-seven point five nine, if we don't pass a levy tonight, it would be established at fifteen percent, even though these appeals aren't completed. This, uh, similar thing, but not to this extent, happened in twenty nineteen with the assessments, and on this sheet, on the second page of this sheet, we did a recoupment rate in twenty twenty, um, because the final assessed valuation, once all the appeals were done for twenty nineteen, were in fact even lower, the value was even lower, so we did a recoupment rate in twenty, um, twenty of, um, just almost two cents, one point seven cents to bring that back up to, to cover for that. So this levy is also, um, calculated in, um, compliance with the Hancock Amendment, and so the, the levy is certified through the state auditor's office once we set it tonight to ensure that it's correct based on the numbers that we have provided. Um, the, the general fund levy is, um, let me see, point four two five nine, um, percent of the levy, four, forty, forty-two point five nine cents, and then the debt service levy is fifteen cents, and that's based and rolled back, um, based on the no tax increase bond issue that was passed in two thousand eight. The public hearing notice that was published in the paper for this, um, levy was actually established based on the, uh, assessed valuation that we received in July third, because we had to post the, um, levy prior to, to get it in time for this, or the public hearing in time for this meeting, we had to use the numbers we had at the time, so the public hearing notice has actually established the levy at five fifty-six point five seven cents. Um, since then, the newer, um, assessment that we received on S- uh, September eleventh was two, two percent lower, so that's why the levy's now fifty-seven point five nine percent. And in the public hearing, we also indicate that this is not based on the final numbers, and it could change from what we've submitted for the levy. Those are my comments and information there.
Alright, any questions?
Yep.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, your honor, um, I guess, uh, I would like to start out by saying, yeah, the county has complicated this, and staff has done a very thorough and objective review of the situation they have found themselves in, uh, really appreciate that. I do wanna highlight the Hancock Amendment, uh, if staff could scroll down one page, uh, on this document, yeah. That, that little table right there, it ultimately ends up on the left side lower at point five seven five nine, that's gonna be the tax rate that we will more than likely approve tonight, but you can see from back in twenty nineteen, that was at sixty-four sixty-three, and it's progressively gone down, and that is a result of the Hancock Amendment, and I appreciate staff for making it that simple for me to see that, and they put it in comprehensive annual reports, you can see it for the past ten years for the city of Blue Springs, you can see it on your tax bill. Um, and it's good to know that during these times when you see a thirty percent assessment increase, that our staff is honoring the Hancock Amendment and not, not, uh, and I will say, I wish other taxing districts only made it that clear, because I certainly can't follow their logic. Okay? But I, I do appreciate, uh, what our city staff does.
Your honor.
Councilmember Kayler?
Thank you, your honor, and I will ditto.
Councilmember Fowler? Any other ditto's? Good old, okay, I think it's unanimous. Okay, uh, we'll go to the public, anyone in the audience like to speak in support of, support of, opposition two, opposition two, close this public hearing. Next we have councilman Fowler, introduction reading of bill number five one three zero.
Yeah, I'll introduce, your honor.
Alright.
First reading of bill number five one three zero, an ordinance establishing the property tax levy for twenty twenty-three.
Your honor, remove the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poll same sign.
Second reading of bill number five one three zero, an ordinance establishing the property tax levy for twenty twenty-three.
Your honor, I move to approve the second reading and proceed with the proper bill number?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levesey?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Bill carries unanimously, given ordinance number five two five three.
Is there a motion to approve the second reading of bill number five one two four?
So moved, your honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I would like, your honor, I would like to propose an amendment to that, if I may.
Alright.
Um, I'll read this to make it clear. I move to amend the budget to increase the budget by two hundred and seventy-seven thousand two hundred dollars for ST forty-four sidewalk infill projects that are in areas that are not eligible for CDVG funding. This funding will be made available from a transfer from general fund reserve to the capital projects fund. The council also directs staff to develop a sidewalk infill program for approval and budget amendment as needed at a future date.
Second. Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second, councilmember Fowler.
I have a question on that. I understand putting in the project, or making the project in budget, it almost sounded like when you read that, the first sentence was an increase. So, I realize the project's an increase, but that money would surely account for somewhere within the budget, right? If, we didn't-
No, councilmember Erickson is proposing to increase the, the project money for that project, ST forty-four, to increase it by two seventy-seven, to, um, create an infill sidewalk project program.
But if-
Where's the money come from?
Uh, general fund, fund balance.
So it was in the fund balance, general fund.
Fund balance.
And now you're marking it for this project.
Yes.
Second sentence says from the general fund.
Okay, alright.
Okay, you've heard the motion, is there any further discussion?
Your honor.
Councilmember Levise.
I'll, I'll just add, I know there was a similar motion that Councilman Erickson made last, last meeting. Uh, and I just, I feel like I've received lots of comments from residents that we need some sort of sidewalk infill program. There's lots of areas where additional sidewalk needs to connect streets or connect existing sidewalk, and I support his attempt at making this happen.
Okay. Councilmember Fowler.
I guess the, in, from our last meeting, this is a one-year commitment right now. It's all we're doing is one year.
According to the amendment, yes. May I make one comment just for information?
Go ahead.
The reason I came up with two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, two-hundred dollars is at current rates for concrete. As staff tells me, uh, just for the concrete and the installation, that would do one mile of sidewalk.
Okay. Any other discussion? Well, Councilmember Edmondson.
So I'm directing to staff, is this money going to existing sidewalk infrastructure that you have projected that we need to take care of and it just has never been funded?
No, this, this would be for new sidewalks or sidewalks do not exist. We have another program for remove and replace maintenance, but this would be for gaps in the current system.
Okay.
Any other comments? Now roll call.
This is on the motion to amend. Councilmember Kayler?
Aye.
Well, I tell you what, since this is amendment, we'll just do a voice vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Okay, now, second reading as amended.
Second reading of bill number five-one-two-four as amended, an ordinance approving, adopting, and appropriating the annual operating and capital budgets of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri for the fiscal year October one, two thousand twenty-three through September thirty, two thousand twenty-four.
Your honor?
Yes.
Uh, just another comment or a question of, of staff. Uh, since we're amending the budget, I'm assuming the budget's toe, ending total is going up the same amount. Okay.
And then, your honor, move the bill be approved on a second reading and assigned it as amended and assigned to proper ordinance number.
Right.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Kayler?
Yes.
Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Given ordinance number, carried unanimously, given ordinance number five-two-five-four.
Next, have introduction, reading of bill number five-one-three-one.
I'll introduce, your honor.
First reading of bill number five-one-three-one, an ordinance accepting right-of-way dedication from Kellen and Charlene Mann from Mann Meadows Third Platte.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second.
You got a second? Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of bill number five-one-three-one, an ordinance accepting right-of-way dedication from Kellen and Charlene Mann for Mann Meadows Third Platte.
Your honor, I move to approve on the second reading and assign to proper ordinance number.
There a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number five-two-five-five.
Next, introduction, reading of bill number five-one-three-two.
I'll introduce, your honor.
First reading of bill number five-one-three-two, an ordinance adjusting compensation and allowances for the mayor and city council members and amending sections one-ten dot two-hundred, salary of council members, and one-ten oh-three-oh B, duties generally, compensation of the mayor of the city of, of the Blue Springs Code of Ordinances.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I just would like to clarify that this puts us all on the same level, as I understand, right? Because we did this a couple of years ago, did we not, for one year ago?
So, if, if I may, your honor?
Yes.
I did, uh, work on this a little bit, uh, upfront. This would only go into effect for any of us on, uh, that it would be reelected. It, it, it does not affect any of us in our current capacity. We'd have to go through the election first.
Correct.
But, but yeah, if, assuming that whoever gets elected, they're gonna benefit from this.
But that's to the next election.
Yes. Yes.
The next election is twenty twenty-four and the only seat up is the mayor's seat. And I must comment, the citizens have gotten a bargain for sixteen years because the new mayor get three thousand dollars a year more than I got for sixteen years.
I'll second that, your honor. You're doing your work.
And, and I put a lot of time in doing this.
Yeah, yeah.
We got more than we paid.
Your honor, we appreciate your sacrifice.
And, and honestly, if I would have had a better opportunity, I would have, uh, proposed an increase for the mayor a few years back.
Long time ago.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Your duty.
Got, got a motion, a second. Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of bill number five-one-three-two, an ordinance suggesting compensation and allowances for the mayor and city council members and amending sections one-ten dot two-hundred, salary of the council members, and one-ten dot zero-three-zero B, duties generally compen- generally, compensation of the mayor and of the Blue Springs Code of Ordinances.
There's a motion? Second. The motion?
Your honor, move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number five-two-five-six.
Next, introduction, reading of bill number five-one-three-two.
I'll introduce, your honor.
First reading of bill number five-one-three-two, three-three.
Three-three.
Three-three. There you go. Three-three. Uh, five-one-three-three.
Three-three.
Ordinance, uh, an ordinance of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, increasing compensation for the municipal judges.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of bill number five-one-three-three, an ordinance of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, increasing compensation for municipal judges.
Your honor, move to approve the second reading and assign to proper ordinance number.
There a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number five-two-five-seven.
Next, introduction, reading of bill number five-one-three-four.
I'll introduce, your honor.
First reading of bill number five-one-three-four, an ordinance of the city, of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, electing changes under the Missouri local government employees retirement system by creating a subgroup of public safety employees that includes detention service and communication officers.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Kayler?
This, this was, uh, because of the state changing the law, correct? On the dispatchers and et cetera.
That's correct. It was, uh, effective last August twenty-eighth, and so we're able to adopt it now to get, make the normal retirement age for them from sixty to fifty-five.
Thank you.
Down here?
And I just wanted to comment, I'm glad to see this was done because it was duly needed.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of bill number five-one-three-four, an ordinance of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, electing changes under the Missouri local government employees retirement system by creating a subgroup of the public safety employ, of public safety employees that includes detention service and communication officers.
Your honor, I move to approve on the second reading and assign to proper ordinance number.
There a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number five-two-five-eight.
Next, introduction, reading of bill number five-one-three-two.
I'll introduce, your honor.
First reading of bill number five-one-three-two, an ordinance adjusting compensation and allowances for the mayor and city council members and amending sections one-ten dot two-hundred, salary of the council members, and one-ten dot zero-three-zero B, duties generally compen- generally, compensation of the mayor and of the Blue Springs Code of Ordinances.
There's a motion? Second. The motion?
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number five-two-five-seven.
Next, introduction, reading of bill number five-one-three-four.
I'll introduce, your honor.
First reading of bill number five-one-three-four, an ordinance of the city, of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, electing changes under the Missouri local government employees retirement system by creating a subgroup of public safety employees that includes detention service and communication officers.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Kayler?
This, this was, uh, because of the state changing the law, correct? On the dispatchers and et cetera.
That's correct. It was, uh, effective last August twenty-eighth, and so we're able to adopt it now to get, make the normal retirement age for them from sixty to fifty-five.
Thank you.
Down here?
And I just wanted to comment, I'm glad to see this was done because it was duly needed.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of bill number five-one-three-four, an ordinance of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, electing changes under the Missouri local government employees retirement system by creating a subgroup of the public safety employ, of public safety employees that includes detention service and communication officers.
Your honor, I move to approve on the second reading and assign to proper ordinance number.
There a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number five-two-five-nine.
Next visitors, Lynn Banks. Come up here and talk to us about something we got no control over.
You mean come up and cause trouble?
Yeah, come up here and cause some trouble.
Okay. Well, that's good.
You started out with some trouble, didn't you?
That's right. I, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. I have been on this side for a long time, so, but, the reason I wanted is just say something, and I've been thinking about it and I emailed some of you. Um, I've lived in Blue Springs thirty-eight years and it's my home. I've been, uh, once I got into Blue Springs, I became a real estate agent thirty-seven years ago and, um, focused primarily serving Jackson County. And that's where I've really worked. But I also became an instructor nineteen years ago and I teach taxation and valuation. And lately, it seems like all I've done is comparative market analysis. And of course, that's because of our tax reassessment. The only thing I'm gonna ask you is I have a lot of concerns because of all the CMAs I've been doing, if you don't want that, that's that comparative market analysis, before a lot of seniors and residents in my area. And the res, the seniors, to try to stay focused, so I can get you out of here, I know how it is to sit on that side.
You're gonna give me three minutes.
I know, I know, I'm fast. Um, they have a lot of concern because they have some difficulty day-to-day just to make it. And now they're worried about the tax increase. And now they're under all this stress. Not only that, but I was in mortgage lending before and I also understand how these people that have mortgages and their increase of their mortgage for their taxes, and of course with taxes, insurance goes up. But also their escrows are gonna go to where they're gonna have their escrows increased. And hopefully they have the money to pay the difference. Otherwise, then it's gonna be double of that. So I have a concern. I have talked to so many people that are thinking about moving out of Jackson County. And all I'm gonna do to finalize this is ask you to follow the leadership of Lee Summit and Independence and file a class action suit on this ridiculous reassessment. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ladies. Again, um, this body did pass the, I mean, has no teeth in it, but we did pass a resolution asking the county executive and the county legislature to roll it back. But again, it has no teeth in it. Uh, we'll discuss, you know, if, I don't think both of those lawsuits, I don't think, I think you can join in on Independence, but not necessarily Lee Summit.
I'm sorry.
But, uh, but anyway, we'll, we'll have that discussion. That's not something you're gonna decide here tonight.
No. I just wanted to give you some input on what I'm hearing and what I've been working on. And I'm not the only agent out there doing this.
Believe you me, as elected officials, we hear the same stuff.
I know, I know you do. And as one of your constituents, I want to let you know the constituents I've been working with. So I just wanna share and they really depend on you to help just, even if you don't accomplish it, it's saying my leadership believes in us. Thank you.
I gave you an extra minute there, didn't I?
Yes.
I can give her a hard time. We go back a long ways. Uh, yeah, I mean, that doesn't really mean anything. We'll just have to figure it out. You know, it's Jackson County and there are a lot of people went up seventy-four percent and even more, which is kinda ridiculous. But again, I, I wish we had the power to do that, but we don't. Uh, next we have a, uh, Speaker of Paris, Anthony Jennings. You wanna talk about city codes and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Antoine Jennings. I moved here to Blue Springs on October the fifth of two thousand and ten. I've been in this community ever since then. Uh, on December twenty-second of two thousand twenty-one, my wife and I purchased a new home at eleven-on-one Southwest Forty-Fourth Street Drive over in Hickory Woods neighborhood. Since then, since December, since we purchased our new home, we have received seven city code violations from then till, up until last week. Now, the reason I came here is because the way that our system is working here in Blue Springs right now, if I commit a crime or accuse of committing a crime and I go to court, I have the right to face my accuser. But here, the way our reporting is done here in the city of Blue Springs, it's all anonymous. And so who, who was ever reporting is now using this government, this government body, as harassment. And it has to stop. I am fed up. I will not be harassed. Every single time I get violated by the city, the city walks it back because they come out, they give the violation, and then, oh, my bad. Well, I'm not taking anymore of my bads. Because if we're gonna have this anonymous reporting and it goes nowhere, then we're gonna have some issues. This last violation I got was for, for a dead tree on my property. A dead tree that's been dead for the last ten years, according to my neighbors. A dead tree that I inherited. And now it cost me forty-five hundred dollars to get it removed because the city gave me until September the first. And the only reason I did it, 'cause I wasn't gonna do it. And my wife said, please do it, you're about to be deployed. Please, I don't wanna deal with this. That's the only reason I did it. I am fed up. I have been in this community now for over ten years and have never had an issue until now. And it has to stop. And I'm bringing it to the city council's attention because something has to be done. Because now, we keep hearing this term, the weaponization of government. This is an example of weaponization of government.
Your, your, your time is up, but I do have a question. And, and Mike, maybe you